The pledge, Councilwoman King, would you lead us to the pledge, please? If you would, please remain standing for a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Here.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish. Councilman Fish.
He's online.
He's going to unmute himself. Let's come back to him, Angie.
All right, Councilwoman Hines.
Present.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanke.
President Dawson.
Present.
Dwight, I need you to unmute yourself so I can hear you. There?
Until he's unmuted.
Looks like he's unmuted. I don't know why we can't...
And IT guys downstairs? You can't hear. You can't hear. Is this the IT guy coming in?
Hear you, folks.
That true, Dwight? Dwight, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Because I can't hear the council chambers.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Do you have the podium mic turned on?
Yes, it's turned on. Dwight, can you hear us? Okay, we're going to move along. And Mr. IT person, would you work with Councilman Fish to get him engaged?
Point of order, I don't believe we can move along.
We have a quorum.
We have a participant that can't hear, so that stops the process.
We have a quorum, and we will move along when Dwight comes on.
He's not absent. If he wants to sign off and declare himself absent, it's legal.
We don't want him to sign.
I can hear you faintly.
You can hear us faintly. Is that better?
That's better.
How is that? If I speak right into...
Thank you.
Speak right into the mic, you can hear us?
Yep.
Are you here?
I am here.
Okay. This reminder for the council, please make sure your microphone is on and you speak clearly, especially since Dwight is online. Make sure your cell phones are on vibrate or airplane mode as we move forward. There are no minutes for approval. I need a motion to amend the agenda to include the acceptance of communications from a letter we received from Jamie Arce regarding the Lexington Business Center.
Back in.
Motion by Councilman Hanke, second by Councilwoman Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sorry, we've got to do a roll call vote. Let's do a roll call vote, Angie.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King. Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Presentations and introductions. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, councilors.
Evening.
I understand the mayor is not here this evening, so I have the privilege of reading a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits housing discrimination that is based on race, skin color, religion, gender, family status, national origin, and disability, and requires recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities, and whereas the City of Elkhart prohibits housing discrimination when renting or buying a house, receiving a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities, and whereas fair housing is essential to the ethical commitment of the City of Elkhart and is crucial to serving our community, our social fabric, economy, health, and environment are strengthened by diverse and inclusive communities, ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Rod Robertson, Mayor of Elkhart, Indiana, in support of our continued commitment to equal housing opportunities for all and keeping vibrancy in our town, do hereby declare the month of April 2020 fair as Fair Housing Month. Signed, Rod Robertson, the Honorable Rod Robertson, Mayor, City of Elkhart. And I forgot to say I have that privilege as president of the Elkhart Human Relations Commission.
And who are you? Who might you be?
Oh, I apologize. I'm Mary Jo Wiley.
Great job, Mary Jo. We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to remind everybody that in the council chambers, you need to remove your caps, so you know that...
We have a Michigan one.
I didn't say that, but... Unfinished business, reports of council committees. There are any... Ordinance on second reading, which you read, proposed ordinance 24-0-07 by title, please.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-07, an ordinance appropriating $400,000 from the American Rescue Plan, Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the emergency restoration of a portion of Grace Lawn Cemetery at the Elkhart River, Riverbank.
I got a motion in the second to adopt this on second reading. Got a motion by Councilwoman Hines, second by Councilwoman Mishler. Tori.
Good evening, Council. Tori Irwin, public orchestra director. So we are here tonight because our ancestors built a cemetery on the high side of a sandy river bank. And unfortunately, over the decades, that bank has eroded to the point where we now have issues when the bank collapses because the cemetery sites are right there. So back in February, we had a collapse of part of the riverbank, about a hundred-foot section. And in response to that, we've hired some engineers to do some soil sampling and geotech work and developed the design to restore or halt the erosion at this location on the riverbank. It's about a hundred-foot stretch. The engineer's estimate is about a $300,000 project. You may recall, some of you, that in 2012, which was over a decade ago now, we also had another hundred-foot section of the riverbank collapse further south from this site. We have about 1,200 feet of riverbank at this cemetery, and it's all in some stage of erosion.
Thank you. Questions for Tori? Mr. Hanke.
This cemetery was put in what year?
Before any of us were here, I don't have an answer to that. I'm sorry. Before any of us were here, I don't have an answer to that, I'm sorry.
So I would have thought, because I was part of that 2012 with flashlights in the night with Mary Olsen putting our hands in soil that we didn't know what we were touching. And I would have thought that we would have taken significant steps at that time, knowing erosion was going to continue if we did nothing. So I know there were cement pieces put down that river bank, and that didn't seem to hold. That's the same area?
No, it's a completely different area. The riprap that we placed in response to the 2012 issue has held. And is holding, so.
So is the plan to do more of the same?
We are working with the cemetery to come up with a long-term plan on how to address the erosion at the river bank. I don't think there's anyone in the room that wishes to spend a lot of money restoring the entire 1,200 feet of river bank. We're trying to come up with other options in conjunction with the cemetery.
So if I could follow then, have we displaced anyone? And are steel barriers, would that be helpful to regain those spaces? Is that a legal issue?
The, the collapse that we experienced, there was an urn that was buried that we have since removed and stored. That will have to be either put back somewhere else, not at the river bank, or further away from the river bank. Steel barriers are an extraordinarily expensive multimillion-dollar repair option.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Fish.
So Tori, have you had conversations with DNR, and they've got certain guidelines, I'm sure?
The DNR actually does not have certain guidelines. They have permitting that we have declared an emergency with them to get the river bank restored here so that it speeds us through the permitting process, but they do not have, they have a permitting process.
Will, will they be observing and overseeing any part of it?
Once, yes, we'll be coordinating with the DNR in their permitting process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Crabtree.
Tori, I guess I'll tag along with Councilman Hanky. This happened about 10 years ago that you said, so there was no, to your knowledge, preventative measure then, thinking, well, if 100 feet of erosion is going to happen, maybe we better look at the rest of the river bank.
The engineering department said the same thing in 2012.
Was that more engineering or cemetery?
Engineering. We identified that the bank was not, was in a state of erosion in 2012 as well. You know, but we don't direct the money, so.
Right, I understand that. I actually drove out there this past weekend, was a little concerned about the overall upkeep, but that's for another, another day. I've walked the entire bank of what I could. The farther, the northern end along the river bank, there are actually plots literally right on the edge. So I think it's only going to be a matter of time. I think it's where the river kind of bends off to the west. It's going to be actual timing. I mean, they were actually born in 1884, so I'm sure maybe Councilman Hanky knows them. But in that timeframe, it's going to.
They still vote, aren't they?
It's going to be a matter of time before, you can tell a lot about a society about how they take care of two things. Their animals, and their deceased. And, you know, I would like to see these remains staying at Grace Lawn, because that's where they chose to have their final rest, to better take care of it, so. I mean, I support it, but I think we need to do it right this time and not come back 10 years later saying, well, there's another 10 feet or 12 feet, whatever, that.
What Tori always says, if you give him enough money, he can fix anything. So I mean, when you make that statement, you want to make sure, be careful what you wish for.
This is true.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Mr. Curry.
Yes, Tori, do you have any timeline when you think you might be able to come back with us and with a plan to repair the rest of the river bank and say, and this is what it's going to cost?
We're working with the cemetery and the administration on options, and I'm sure that we'll be in communication once we vetted all of those options.
So it won't be long, you won't wait till something else happen before you come back?
Not by my choice.
All right, appreciate it.
Mr. Hanky.
So, yeah, I'm not sure where we are with Second Street, Third Street, but there'll be a lot of available cement, rift raft or whatever you called it?
Riprap.
Oh, okay, because I thought rift raft, that's in somebody else's district. But anyhow. I was just trying to coordinate this and see how this was going to happen because, I agree with Councilor Crabtree, we have an obligation here to righten the wrong, and costs is somewhat secondary, and I'm disappointed that in 2012, we didn't take a better and more proactive approach to this. But I do believe we have an obligation now, and I would support that. Just about regardless of cost, we have an obligation here.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you, Tori. Has there been any efforts to pursue any additional state or federal grants other than utilizing ARP funds for this project? Since the uniqueness of this, I didn't know if there was anything else available.
No.
Okay. Am I, then I did it?
Mr. President, may I follow with? Is Army Corps in any part of this design, do they have any recommendations? Is it worth?
We're out of the river, so no.
All right.
On the river bank as well, I found plots for each of you. Funded it myself. They have to be used by tomorrow.
Don't quit your day job, David. Thank you, Tori. Is there anyone else? I want to open up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this? Seeing none, I return it back to the council floor, council discussion. Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Hanky, a second from Councilman Crabtree. Angie, would you read that by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-07, an ordinance appropriating $400,000 from the American Rescue Plan Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the emergency restoration of a portion of Grace Lawn Cemetery at the Elkhart River Riverbank. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-08 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-08, an ordinance appropriating $937,363 of Mayco grant money from the Local Income Tax Distribution Fund for the Bristol Street Widening Project.
I get a motion in the second to adopt this on second reading?
Some of those.
Got a motion by Councilman Fish, second by Councilman Crabtree, council discussion. Mr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Jeff Schaefer, Assistant City Engineer. Thank you for your time this evening. Very briefly, just want to give you kind of an update on the Bristol Street project in general, it'll be very short. We are through the stage three of engineering, the stage three plans. An in-depth projects have four stages of plans, and we're through stage three. That was completed in February. We've completed really 97% of our right-of-way. We have one parcel left out of 40 that we've acquired, so almost all of our right-of-way is completed. All of our local, state, and federal permits are actually completed at this point. We got our last state permit last week, and the project, as you see in our memo, is scheduled to bid in October. What we're asking for you this evening is to basically reappropriate money that was previously appropriated in 2019. When we were awarded the Mayco grant for this project, the council appropriated about a million and a half dollars for the project. The way that works is we actually fund the engineering and the purchase of the right-of-way, and then that money is reimbursed to us. So the reimbursements that we've collected so far, we're asking that you reappropriate that for the project so we can finish out the little bit of engineering that's left, the right-of-way acquisition that's left, and start moving toward construction. And so that's what we're asking for this evening. As you see in the memo that was written, our costs have gone up a little bit, so we will probably be coming back prior to construction for some additional funds, once we know exactly what that's going to be. But this will get us to the bidding in October, so we can keep the project moving forward. Can you answer any questions you have?
Questions? Mr. Hanky?
Of the project, are you back with us? I didn't realize.
Yes, sir.
I didn't, I'm sorry I didn't attend the festivities. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
But quite frankly, in my district and near my home, and having talked to neighbors in the area, the traffic, we believe, is going to be too fast. And it's going to devalue the frontage of houses that, based on the land take as we did, in front of East Lake when it went four-lane, and I really am concerned about endangering Pinewood and Park patrons right in that area where it converges to the new four-lane just after Gene Wood Drive. You know, it's a huge amount of money, I get the match, I just don't believe this is in the best interest, especially since that area is quite calming, as it were, down to two lanes, number one. And then finally, I did talk to Councilman Mishler earlier, a lot of cities are going back to two-lane, it's too expensive to manage four-lane, replacing four lanes every time they go bad, just like Second and Third Street, it's a huge job, multi-millions of dollars, and even one lane less cuts your cost by 25%. And the millions and millions of dollars, it's a lot of money. So I won't support this all the way through, it's still good to have you back.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. With the widening, will there be any pedestrian improvements with this? Any additional sidewalk, bike lanes, anything like that as part of it?
Yes, sir. So on the north side of the street, we will have the full five-foot or six-foot sidewalk, the standard sidewalk. On the south side of the street, we'll be completing the path that goes from County Road 17, so there'll be a multi-use path 10 feet wide that will then extend all the way to Walker Park. So Walker Park will now be connected to the path that goes all the way to County Road 17, and then the county has future plans to then connect that path all the way down County Road 17 to Goshen. I think you've probably seen the construction at County Road 17 overpass, that's extending that pedestrian path. So part of this project is the component to create that multi-use path on the south side of Bristol Street and extend it to Walker Park.
Thank you.
Very.
Yeah, Jeff, as we go out, how far are we going out to? 15?
This will be from Gene Wood Drive to County Road 15, yes, sir.
Gene Wood to 15, and as we're going out, are we going to be including new water lines and sewer lines?
We already have water and sewer in that area. What we will be adding will be storm sewer to provide better drainage in that area.
Thanks.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Fish.
So Jeff, we're acquiring the space to put this in, including the trail, and that's all wonderful, but this also gives us an option whether we go to four or two lanes with a middle lane. I mean, we have the option of changing this mathematical formula, if you will. If it doesn't work out, we can still do a road calming, can we not?
So the cross-section in this project is a three-lane cross-section, one travel lane in each direction with a center turn lane. And the lanes are relatively narrow. This is not a full 36-foot width. So this is a narrow three-lane section, similar to what we did on Benham Avenue, a little bit wider than that.
We can also utilize our police force and make sure that people are following the speed limits, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Open up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing none, turn it back to the council, you know, further council discussion. Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, I get the place and all that, not like they have enough to do, and the speed is the speed, it's common sense, it just brings more traffic. The path of least resistance, you know, will now be this, this four-lainer running through, like it or not, it just happens to be in the middle of many homes on frontage as well as those turning in, not only Glenwood and, and the Pines and all of those that run down there. That's somewhat holding the value, and we add more pedestrians. It sounds really good, but there is no wall that separates cars coming off the street and going across the sidewalk. So the width of the sidewalk doesn't really matter, otherwise that would have worked on Cassopolis Street, right? So we put crosswalks, and it's a matter of getting from A to B, Pinewood to the park or to the library and across. So once you cross that road, you are safe until you need to cross it again. So that's the area that we looked at, connecting, I don't see a big area, it could be cleaned up, because that's desperately needed, but the extra, extra lanes and the extra costs, and then if your answer is that we would come back and redesign it to make it narrower, that's kind of like realizing, you know, there was decay at the cemetery and waiting for it to fall off before we say we have now the problem. Why don't we just do it right the first time, and I think traffic calming, just like East Jackson, was what this is all about, and we're doing the opposite in an area of super-high traffic and residential and school zone.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to clarify, I thought that I heard that it's still really going to be two lanes, but then there'll be a turn lane. Mr. Schaefer, maybe I should have asked, but that is what you said. Yes, that's correct. It's a three-lane section with, so one travel lane in each direction and then a continuous center turn lane.
Good.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
To clarify, you have four lanes to Gene Wood, you have four lanes to County Road 15, and you're saying that you're going to reduce these to two lanes?
That's correct. It's a three-lane section. That's what the council agreed upon in 2019, was a three-lane section.
That middle lane is, is going to be the?
Continuous center turn lane, very similar to, it's basically a, almost an identical section to Benham Avenue between Lusher and Indiana.
And so how much take is on the south side of the road?
That varies widely, based on the, the original Bristol Street right-of-way varied widely. So in some cases, the right-of-way acquisition was as little as 10 feet, in other cases, because of the way the property lines work, it was as much as 30 feet.
Yeah, I just get concerned because right across from East Lake, there are houses that have to open their garage door to get off the street because of the widening of Bristol Street in that area, and, you know, we've had a couple of accidents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Motion for third and final, please.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Mishler. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-08, an ordinance appropriating $937,363 of Mayco grant money from the Local Income Tax Distribution Fund for the Bristol Street Widening Project. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-09 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-09, an ordinance repealing Elkhart City Ordinance 5849, Best Development CPUD, and rezoning the same Planned Unit Development District, R4, multiple-family dwelling district standards.
Thank you. Okay, I got a motion in the second to adopt this ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Got a motion from Mrs. Hines, second for Miss, Mrs., Ms. King. Council discussion, Mr. Huber.
Good evening, Council. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. The ordinance in front of you this evening is dealing with an eight-acre, about an acre parcel of property on the east side of Cassopolis Street, just behind Communitywide Credit Union, Hawkins Water Tech, that area of Cassopolis. Originally, this property, when it was brought. Originally, this property, when it was brought into the city, it was zoned as a PUD to allow for an assisted living facility. And it was never developed from there. For some reason, the new developers wanted to change the zoning out of that PUD to do a new 240-unit multifamily apartment complex. Given the current status and current need for housing in the community, this obviously fits the vision of the community. It's consistent with what the previous zoning was with the previous PUD. In terms of intensity of use, it's not going significantly higher in intensity of use. So the Plan Commission did pass this to the council with a 7-0 recommendation. Just wanted to mention, this is just the zoning change. And this ordinance also repeals the previous PUD to eliminate the use of the assisted living facility and creates the new PUD for the housing using the city's zoning ordinance around R5. This is just the zoning phase. The developer hasn't invested in the final plans. This will have to meet all traffic requirements and all of the tech review components to before it can be developed completely. They just want to make sure they have the zoning change before they were investing in those next steps of the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have a representative from the developer in the audience as well, if you have questions.
Mishler.
Yes, thank you. I know this is right on CAS, and there is not currently a light there. Is this going to require the addition of a traffic study, a stoplight? I know CAS is a state road, so I assume we've been in communication with the state for these concerns?
So it will require a traffic study to be completed as part of the tech review process. So there won't be any approvals without the results of the traffic study first.
The other concern that I have for this is when we passed the original PUD for the assisted living facility, part of the argument for it was that there would be a reduced amount of traffic because these were older folks who don't necessarily drive a lot. This is for a 240-unit apartment complex. I'm also concerned because it is exactly 1.8 miles away from the local school, so it's just under the two-mile busing minimum. So we could potentially have a bunch of students walking down CAS early in the morning trying to get to Beardsley Elementary and things like that. I know it's early, but I hope we can, if this project continues, work with the, our partners in the schools to find a solution to hopefully bus those kids to get them to school safely without having to walk on CAS.
Like I said, we're just dealing with zoning tonight. I'm sure those issues will be addressed through the tech review process and through the development of the traffic study, so.
Thank you.
The Hines.
Though that I understand, if, to your point, this is about zoning, so in order for us to move to any other space, we need to, this would need to pass.
That's correct.
That's what I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
This is just the rezone?
That's correct. This is the rezone to allow the PUD for residential use.
The other things would still come before...
All of the other things have to go...
Come before the council.
The tech review process, I don't know that that requires council, does it?
Okay. Not the tech review process, but any street changes?
Any of those kinds of things would have to come in, correct.
And, okay, all right, all right. Just wanted to be clear. All right, I'm sorry.
The developers here, I don't know if you had any comments that you wanted to add to what I added about traffic.
No, I'm just wondering. I just, I think when we get to that process, then we can delve more into it. And I guess, do we want to get to that process is the question we're asking tonight as to whether or not that's something we would like to see. And there's a concern that I hope will be taken into consideration as we move forward. Mr. Mishler.
Just again, CAS is a state road, so I don't necessarily know what our impact would be in the future if the state goes ahead and decides to add a traffic signal and things like that. If a tech review is the next stage, I'm not sure what else would be necessarily coming in front of council unless they were asking for any incentives or anything like that again.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add, Ms. Welch?
Absolutely. Never turn down an opportunity to talk. Crystal Welsh, Aben Marsh, 303 Riverway Drive. I noticed in your packet you didn't have a site plan, so I'm going to pass some of those out.
Again, as Mr. Huber indicated, the intention here is to rezone for a conceptual PUD for, to allow for multifamily residential. In the drawing, you'll see there's a multiple buildings with some, a large retention area as well as some onsite amenities for the residents, including a playground and a dog park. Another aspect I'd like to identify is kind of that tan loop around the project that connects to the existing sidewalk on the entry street that would go in next to the Water Tech and, or Hawkins Water, then connects to the sidewalk system that the city invested lots of money in on Cassopolis Street to make Cassopolis safer for pedestrians. The other thing I'll mention in communication with the planning staff is that this drawing, at this point in time, does not connect north or south to either end. But the staff has asked us to allow for that connection in the future if it is seen to be a benefit to the city, if that makes sense. You'll notice the, on the north side, there is a dumpster enclosure that could connect to this, it's a private street right now in the development just to the north of the project. But that could physically be brought through and connect if that property were to redevelop in the future. Same thing on the south side. You'll notice that there's, kind of looks like a travel lane that goes just, it's the middle of the parking, just on the east side of the retention area. That was left open as well for a potential future connection to a development on the south side and to connect to the existing street network if the city thought that was a viable option moving forward. That was at a request for the planning department, again, so there's not a bottleneck of one point in, one point out, so that this would allow for future connectivity into the rest of the existing city networks, street network. At this point in time, again, they haven't gone through the full engineering process, so this is a conceptual PUD. My understanding is, is that final site plan after it gets through tech review will go back to the Plan Commission for approval at a public meeting.
Mishler.
Thank you. For these units, are they workforce housing, market rate is a portion of them workforce, or are these all set aside at market rate?
They, because we haven't done the engineering, they don't have the actual cost yet, but the developer is committed to trying to provide affordable rental units in the community. They don't know where that price point hits yet, nor if it's going to be, they have 240 units, but we haven't gotten a final count on each bed yet. So we don't know what the mix of one, twos, and three-bedroom units will be, but we anticipate a mix of. So there will be some for families, but also, right now, the market is really looking for more one-bedroom units. And so we're hoping to provide some of those here because as family, family sizes just continue to get smaller, household sizes over the last 20 years have just gotten smaller and smaller. And so the opportunity to provide some nice new one-bedroom units on the north side of town, I think, is a good idea, but also offering the two- and three-bedrooms for people to have a more variety of choices.
There been any effort to work with the state for Lytech credits, or is there any inclination to approach the city for any incentives at this point?
At this point, the conversation has been to try to get the pro forma put together for a potential request from the state. We would love to partner with the city if possible, where incentives might be available. I do know our initial conversations with the staff have indicated that potentially there is an opportunity to help facilitate sewer and water connections in this area through and along with this property. So we're more than happy to participate with the city in those processes as they come forward. But again, those all, all those details will come out when we move into the engineering phase. And as that is a fairly expensive process, the developer wants to be sure that the zoning is in place before we move, we move into that. As Mike mentioned, the tech review process, we have had initial conversations with the state of Indiana. They're aware this project is in the kind of planning and review process locally. And so if, in fact, the zoning would be approved tonight, our next step is to start that traffic analysis and work with the state on what that might be. As for the stoplight, I believe, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, those warrant analysis are done at the state level.
Any questions? Mr. Curry.
Yeah, Crystal, it's good to see you. My concern is to make sure there's enough parking spaces. I've seen some of the parking we did many years ago, and you got people living together and everybody have a car, and now you got people parking where they shouldn't be parking. So I just hope we have adequate parking space, no matter whether we go with one, two, or three-bedroom apartments.
Yes. Parking is an interesting idea. You don't want to overpark, but you certainly don't want to underpark either. Another benefit of this site that the developer identified was the fact it's on the trolley route. And so having access to public, we have very limited public transportation in this community, and to have access to it right here actually makes a whole lot of sense for this to be a location for a multifamily development project.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
Preliminary or not, I, again, I can't, I can't favor this with one in and one out, same road, Cassopolis Street, and all the history we know of Cassopolis Street. And if I'm counting 240, they'd have to be all singles because this parking lot shows 250 spaces. So 240 apartments for 250 spaces does not include any visitor parking, any other type of parking. And moreover, if we had known, if, again, if I knew there were laterals that could be used to get some of this traffic to other areas, that would be wonderful. This isn't showing any of those things, so I can't give a green light to the next step if I already have a problem with the first step.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make sure, the zoning as it's written, the site plan, maybe it's not clear, but the zoning as it's written only allows, allows for a minimum of one-and-a-half cars per unit. So there will be a maximum or a minimum of 360 parking spaces for these 240 units.
Have you counted these spaces?
Thank you.
Conceptual.
Any, any other comments from the audience? Thank you, Crystal. Open up to the public, anyone from the public? Seeing none, return it back to the council floor. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Please read this on...
Third and final.
And a motion from Mrs. Hines, second from Mr. Crabtree. Angie, would you read this by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-09, an ordinance repealing Elkhart City Ordinance Number 5849, Best Development CPUD, and rezoning the same as Planned Unit Development District R4, multiple-family dwelling district standards. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I've not been able to hear Councilman Hinky's last two votes. Is his mic on?
Yes, but I'll gladly explain those last two votes if that helps at all.
Okay, you can do that after the meeting.
I just couldn't hear what you're voting.
Give Dwight a call. Would you please read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-10 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the issues, issuance of the City of Elkhart, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
So we were informed by the developer on this project about a week and a half ago that they need a little additional time on their costing for their project. And they have asked us, and so we're here, the administration on behalf of the developer asking for a table of this, of this item.
Sorry, guys, I don't know if Angie had a...
Point of order, we need a motion in a second before Mike can speak.
Sorry.
Yes, can I get a motion, Mr. Holtz?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Mishler.
Sorry. Yeah, so we've been approached by the developer. They'd like initial 30 days of time, so we'd like to ask that the council table this until we have additional information from the developer that they're comfortable moving forward.
A motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Mishler, motion to table. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on motion to table, please?
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one to table.
Thank you. There are no ordinances and resolutions referred to committee, there are no tabled ordinances and resolutions, there are no ordinances on first reading, there are no resolutions, there are no vacation hearings. Is there any new business from council? Hinky.
We did receive, I believe from the controller, yeah, it looks like the controller's office in regards to the Lexington Business Center, and that is an interesting thing, but we have a business commitment that I think we just need to follow through with on taxable money and economic development. If there is some latitude and discussion regarding the reclamation of those funds, I would gladly be a part of that, but I do believe we need to move forward, and I would ask that the city would keep us posted as well. Then I'm going to move over to, this is Board of Public Works dated March 5, '24, in communications. There's, there are some typos, and I realize they're not ours, but in the acceptance of communications, I just wanted to reflect the fact that page three has one, two, two typos that are minor, doesn't change the, the outcome. But I would also suggest that these penalties of breaching water permits and violating the contamination is $100. And you got to say, well, noise ordinance is 250 first time up, and some of these are $100, not even covering the legal fees and the people attending. So that is a concern. I know we brought it up before, and the city was trying to address fees and fines at this time. And then the Learner Theater Board minutes Wednesday, February 14, reflects a decrease in revenue of $262,910 from a year ago, while Kurt Janowski in the ballroom had a banner year, a banner year of $1,600,000. And so the concerns I have is in the notes, it reflects several people changing roles and are retraining. And I think I would ask that Michelle Frank, the director, maybe give us an update about all of these changes and the impact. And then there was a conflict... Um, and then there was a conflict of interest statement in regards to past Mayor Lipti and a, maybe a company that he's affiliated with, but it doesn't go into enough detail. Um, and that is on, now there's not a page number, but second to the last page, it talks about addressing conflict of interest, iDart Creative Studio, and I think I would like to hear more about that. It goes around and around, but it doesn't really tell us what the conflict may be. And quite honestly, um, I try to read these minutes and try to go through them, um, for transparency purposes. A redevelopment commission, there's just, and the amount of money spent through redevelopment, there's just a lot of missing information. So if any layperson was to read this, there's no rhyme or reason. Um, and in most cases, dollar values are not, um, affixed. And so it's, it's too incomplete to really follow, but these are the legal records kept for perpetuity, accountability and transparency. And I would only ask if we would look at these, millions of dollars, but it, it just really doesn't state. I don't even know who owns 824 Wren Street that we're putting $35,299 in, but they're doing it, there's the 35,000, it just doesn't tell us about the property in and of itself. So I would ask, uh, maybe that Brad Tracy, Chief of Staff, would talk to them about broadening, uh, the minutes a little bit so we can better understand as a flow. Um, and again, the, these minutes will be here 50 years from now, they're still going to be available to the public, and they should just be complete. Thank you very much.
Any other new business? Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Uh, yes, just two brief things. Uh, one, I want to invite folks to Edge Water Park on April 3rd for Good Deeds Day, there's going to be a park cleanup there. And also, we have National Telecommunications Week coming April 14th to the 20th, and I believe our folks at Dispatch will be having an open house around that time, so I encourage folks to, uh, check it out and support our folks at the 911 Center. They are doing a very important job for our community, and we greatly appreciate all the hard work they do. The date was April 3rd.
Any other business?
I'm sorry, I forgot. The Elkhart Historic and Cultural Preservation Commission, excellent minutes. I mean, they are thorough, they're complete, anybody can read them and know what's going on. So those are very nice, just give them the kudos.
Good. Yeah, I'd like to, uh, thank Dispatch. This weekend, we had a Easter egg hunt, uh, Elkhart Black Expo, and the traffic got so tight, we had to block the streets without getting permission. So when I called Dispatch and let them know, they were very cooperative, they sent it out, so our public safety officers would know what was going on down there. So I want to give kudos to them. Also want to remind everybody that every meeting that the city has is on WebEx. So there's a public part for public participation. So when you get to the Board of Works, or the Lerner Theater, or anyplace else, you can comment, because that's where those comments need to be heard from. To bring them here to the council and ask us to do something about them, uh, is kind of out of our realm, but as elected officials, we can attend those meetings, and I would encourage everyone to do so on WebEx. So when you have concerns that you think need to be addressed, that's where they're addressed. It's a great opportunity for you. Thank you.
As a point of order.
No point of order. At this point, I'd like to report for Mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety, or City Departments.
You have to recognize a point of order, sir.
Are there any reports from Board of Works?
You have to recognize the point of order.
Okay, any works? Neighborhood Association.
Is that, is that funny, ma'am, that we don't follow the rules?
Neighborhood Associations. Please do not badger the audience, Mr. Hinky. Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I'd like to report for the PMRAN Neighborhood Association, just like to say that we will be meeting this Sunday, which is the 7th of the month, at 5:00 PM at the PMRAN Park, uh, Pavilion at 5:00 PM, and we do invite people to come visit our meetings if they would like. So we will be there at 5:00 PM. One of the things we'll be discussing is our neighborhood cleanup. We've picked May 18th to have that neighborhood P cleanup. Got in touch with the young man that so graciously came out and helped us last year, and he said he'd be back, he's 13 years old now, and say he'd be back to help us this year, and we appreciate getting to know the kids in our neighborhood. So anybody want to be, attend our meeting, it'll be this Sunday, it's the 7th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. At this point, I'd open up for privilege of the floors, anyone in the audience who would like to speak anything on the jurisdiction of Elkhart City Council?
My name is Dorothy Rose, and I live at 56515 Arbor Cove Drive in Elkhart. I'm here to talk about the Welch Packaging vacuum system noise issue that started for us approximately a year and a half ago. It was addressed by me, as well as many of my neighbors, to Andy Reath at Welch Packaging. We've talked to him a number of times and about the excessive noise from 5:00 in the morning on Monday until 1:00 the next morning on Tuesday, and this goes on until Friday at three, at around 3:00. I can be sitting in my living room watching TV, and I have to actually turn up the volume so I can hear, and that's with my doors and windows closed. It's even worse when you're outside. I like to work out in my yard.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do I have to start again? You're okay.
No, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyhow, uh, and it wakes me up at night, and I have a CPAT machine, and, which I was told by Andy Reath that I should probably look into, or a white noise machine, which I don't understand why I have to do that. And then my two little neighbors next door, five and two years old, and they just live south of me, and they get awakened during the night, and they do have a white noise, uh, machine ahead of time already. Um, oh, let's see where I'm at. We had talked to the Elkhart City Engineers, and they did come out, and they did in fact confirm that noise. And, uh, they sent a letter to Welch Packaging on September 14th. Are you okay if I read that letter? Um, it says, "Thank you for an update." This is from, um, Ron Glick, and he said, "Thank you for the update from last month. Time has continued to tick away, and it seems we are no closer to solving the excessive noise issue, um, and bringing Welch Packaging into compliance with the noise ordinance. That said, the City of Elkhart does insist compliance to the noise ordinance, and therefore Welch Packaging has 30 days from today to become compliant. If after 30 days, October 14th, 23, Welch Packaging is deemed to be noncompliant, the following actions will be taken. The cyclone system shall only be operational from hours 7:00 AM to 5:00, Monday through Saturday. Noncompliance fines and fees will be assessed. If not in compliance after 60 days from today, the cyclone system will not be allowed to be operational at all until it is deemed to be compliant." Well, they did do quite a few, um, things. They put up a buffer. This thing looks like a huge octopus, metal octopus on top of their building. They did build a buffer, they, before that, they bolted down the fans that were working to think that they were out of sync, they've done that, it didn't help. And then finally, according to the city engineers, they did become compliant with the noise. Okay, um, we feel, even with that level, that we feel that our level of quality of life has been dramatically reduced. As I am writing this, and that was about 5:30 this afternoon, I could still hear the noise through my house. I did call Andy on, uh, March 15th and ask him why, when I got up at 4:30, 4:20 in the morning, it was running at that time. And then in talking to my neighbor Lamar Mast, he said he was up at 1:30 and it was still running. So I asked if, are they changing the hours, is it going to be worse, or what? And he said he was going to ask, he, he called me back, or texted me back and said that he did address this with somebody, talked to him about it, but I'm still waiting, 10 days later, I'm still waiting on, um, an answer on that. So, um, would appreciate your help and whatever can be done. If you have any questions, I might try to answer.
If you want to stick around, someone might have some afterwards.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have to sign, don't I?
Yeah, please sign in. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Clara Hadley, and I'm coming on behalf of my evangelistic team from Kingdom Impact Christian Culture Church. We are having a community prayer on April 12th, Friday evening at 6:00 o'clock down on the plaza, and it's for the community. We will be praying for everything, and I'm coming to invite the council men and women to come and be a part, uh, of that day. We will be praying for you all, so we would love to see you there for that event. Again, that's Friday, April 12th, 6:00 PM down on the plaza. It will be from 6 to approximately 7:30, um, because we'll be covering quite a few things, but you're free to come and go as you please, but we would love to see you all out there, okay?
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience?
We just spoke before the, um, and I appreciate your time this evening, but I'm, I want to also stress and support my neighbors. I first brought this attention, this noise issue to the Attention of Welch Packaging in 2022 in, uh, September, roughly around that, I don't have an exact date, but, um, I just, I want to speak to the quality of our life since then and the noise that we've dealt with, and what we've had to work around to try to deal with this noise at night. Uh, can I, can I pass this, I'm going to show you the location.
Just give her the, uh, she'll take care of it.
That's a considerable distance from our property that can also hear it, uh, but I just wanted to show you how close we are to this machine that's making all the noise. Um, so like I said, I've been dealing with this for about a year and a half now, uh, I'm not sure the exact time it came online. I, I first noticed the noise several months before I said anything, I approached Welch Packaging about it, um, thinking that maybe it was construction and that eventually it would end, but it didn't, so I approached them. It was, uh, some, like I said, sometime in, uh, I believe it was around October, September, October. And then, a year later, we finally got to the point where I got city officials involved, I talked to Ron Glick and, um, Tim Vestine, I don't know if you know him, I've been in contact with them, and it took almost a year for them to actually get to the point where they tried some corrections, they tried to do some of the issues, and then, they got to the point there, uh, maybe about three or four months ago, where the city said, "Yes, you're in compliance, we're below the 83 decibel level." And I've been telling Welch Packaging since then, it doesn't matter if you get below that level, we're right on the border of the city and the county. I live in the county, city is right adjacent to my property. And, uh, at that point, I said, "It doesn't matter if you get to 83 decibels, we're still going to hear it, it's still going to be an inconvenience, it's still going to be a quality of life issue." And I was correct, it's still, like just this evening, with the weather conditions, uh, the way they are, it's as loud as it ever was. Um, so now I have to go home this evening, and my bedroom's facing, it's the north wall. Uh, I've changed my sleeping habits, I now sleep at the foot of the bed to try to get away from it a bit, or sleep in another bedroom, which all my bedrooms face the north wall, so it's difficult to get away from the noise. Um, I, I guess my main concern right now is, you know, I, and I haven't seen the actual decibel readings myself, that it is below the 83 decibel, I've never been included in, in those conversations and, and seen the actual meter reading, so it would be nice to see that, but I've been told they've been around the 80, 81 decibel level, but even at that, it's still loud. And I've taken readings myself with my phone, it's just a, an app, a decibel meter app, and it's been in the mid to high 80s. You know, granted, it's not a, it's not a high-end decibel meter, so, um, but just with my phone, I've read quite a bit higher than that. So my main concern is just the quality of life, we've been dealing with it for almost two years this summer, and it's, um, it's just unbearable at times, can't go out in the evenings, can't sleep at night. So, um, I'm just hoping maybe that we can get some help with the city council, um, if this issue is.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. You stick around, sir, uh, some people have some questions for you afterwards.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jacqueline Foy, and I live on Waymouth Lane in Elkhart. Um, you may remember, I was here at the February 12th meeting and spoke about the Welch Packaging noise problem. So, um, our neighbors, they, they live across US 20 from us, so we're actually there, that facility is right in their backyard, we're a mile away, and we're still getting an unbearable amount of noise from this facility. Um, in reference, I won't repeat what they said about how irritating it is, but I do want to address the issue that Welch Packaging has been basing their defense, I guess, on the 83-decibel rule, and in our opinion, that is a bogus misreading of the noise ordinance. So, um, you all just received a copy of the noise ordinance, and I'd like us to take a look at that and see how they, that is being misinterpreted. So I am, uh, an English teacher by trade, and one of the skills that I teach my students is the art of close reading, and reading something slowly and carefully and not superficially skimming it. And I believe that city officials have superficially skimmed this ordinance and have not read it carefully, and are allowing Welch to really violate what is written here. So if we could please look at the opening, um, Articles A and B at the top, and Article A says, "No person shall make, continue or cause to be made or continued any unreasonably loud, raucous, improper, continuous, offensive or unusual noise which disturbs, injures or endangers the reasonable comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the city." And as you've heard from some of my neighbors, we are definitely experiencing discomfort with this noise. And then, under prohibited noises, if we could please look at Items 16 and 17 that are on Page Three of, or I'm sorry, Page Two of your document. So here it reads that "The operation of any noise creating blower or power fan, or any internal combustion engine, the operation of which causes unreasonably loud and raucous noise due to the explosion of operating gases or fluids, unless the noise from the blower fan or fan is muffled, and the engine is equipped with a muffler device sufficient to deaden the noise." Okay, and then Item 17 addresses the 83-decibel issue. So "Any noise that exceeds a noise level of 83 decibels based on a distance from the noise source of not less than 15 feet, or any noise that can be heard more than 35 feet from its source, and is inherently obnoxious or patently offensive, shall be prima facie evidence of a noise prohibited by Division A of this section. Noise that creates less decimals than 83 decimals from 15 feet also constitutes noise prohibited by Division A if the noise otherwise constitutes a prohibited noise stated at Division B of this section." And here's the important part, "Further, there is not any decibel measurement requirement to prove the existence of a noise prohibited by Division A." So we are certainly farther away than 35 feet from the source, and we are experiencing an irritating, persistent noise. Um, last week, so last week it was quiet, we thought the problem had ended. The week prior to that, it ran 24 hours a day, Monday through Friday, and we thought maybe there was something that had been done, because we have been told through Tim Vestine that we're working with, that they are working on mitigation issues, but at 5:00 AM this So we have been told that Welch has attempted mitigation measures, but these are obviously not working. A neighbor of ours who could not be here tonight but works in the construction industry said that he knows for a fact that there are air handler systems very similar to this one all over Elkhart County that are not emitting this type of noise. So obviously, there is something wrong with this piece of equipment. We are asking why, or how to make sure that this is being enforced, and ask why Welch is still allowed to operate this. I brought it to your attention at the last meeting that they had not filed any permits for this either. We found out that they did finally file the necessary permitting paperwork, and that is now in the review process, but this is almost two years after the fact, after this was built. So, but meanwhile, they are somehow allowed to keep operating without any sort of financial penalty. The noise ordinance lays out all sorts of financial penalties for violations. None of those have been assessed. They have been told by city officials, we think kind of as a compromise, that they are allowed to run it above, at any volume they want, between 8 and 5 during the day. But as they're working on a solution to this problem, but they've repeatedly disregarded this eight to five rule, and we would question why they're even allowed to run it between 8 and 5. So we are just at a point of high frustration and feel like the ordinance is in place for a reason for the protection of citizens, and it is not being enforced. And, oh, and the last bit of the problem is, now we're experiencing a little bit of the passing of the buck with city agencies. So we were advised by Tim Vestine to contact city police whenever the noise was excessive, and after we had made several calls, and several of our neighbors had made calls, we were then told by city police that they were not accepting any of those calls anymore, and that that was not their issue, and that it was a, hold on, that it was a code enforcement issue, not a legal, not a police issue. So, but Tim Vestine told us, no, it is indeed not a code enforcement issue, it is a police issue because it's ordinance enforcement. So it seems like there's a back and forth, and nobody wants to touch it. And we filed the complaint through the 311 app as well, and it keeps getting passed around, and nothing is happening. So as you can see, we are at a level of high frustration, and we are just asking that a specific city department be assigned to address this, and that someone would please hold Welch accountable and fix this problem for our quality of life.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Joe Foy, 22984, Waymouth Lane. I'm not going to go through a lot more. You've heard from my neighbors. Tonight, what we bring before you, I just want to remind you, is something that nine people sat in your chairs 30 years ago and passed this, passed this ordinance to help protect citizens from noises like this. This ordinance has been updated multiple times since then. You can see clearly in what you were given tonight. 2008 was the last time. This is not an antiquated ordinance. This is an ordinance put in place with specific outlines and guidelines for what would be considered obnoxious. I just ask you, as the nine people sitting here tonight, to please help us in whatever fashion it is, in whatever fashion it is with the other city departments, to help us come to a good resolution. None of us tonight who are upset about this want Welch to go away. We want them to have a good business. We want them to be good community partners in our community, but at the same time, we need some respect for our rights as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Now, we're going to close the public hearing. On the floor, I mean, scheduling of committee meetings, there are no committee meetings. Acceptance of communications. Got a motion to accept communications?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, seconded by Mr. Mishler. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on accepting communications?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
All of those that are listed here on acceptance.
All those in the packet that you didn't let me draw attention to.
All those in the packet as we amended the acceptance of communications.
Point of order, there's a vote in progress.
Thank you. Angie, would you roll a vote, please?
He didn't bother attending mine.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Got a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion, would you do a roll call vote, Angie, on adjournment? Motion from Ms. Hines, seconded by Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Adjourned, nine to zero.
Thank you.
You know, there are state permit agencies that you can call, since there is no permit in this case. There's also class action available to you against Welch or the city.